It's Monday, I mean Saturday. I'll stick my head in for a little bit. We've got a bar game that I definitely need to do.
It's Saturday, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Good evening and welcome to the Trotwood Madison Thursday, October 2nd work session board meeting. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education and Public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and not to be considered a public community meeting. Mrs. Adams, would you call the row?
Yes, Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Can we stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle for liberty and justice for all.
Sweet.
Heard a little voice there.
Yes, that was sweet. Music to my ears. Yes, music to my ears.
Next is our Trotwood mission statement that will be read by the Trotwood Board of Education.
The mission of the Trotwood Madison City Schools is to graduate all students prepared to excel in a global society with a commitment to lifelong learning by guaranteeing a challenging curriculum facilitated by an innovative and dedicated staff, community participation, and state-of-the-art resources in a stimulating atmosphere.
Next on our agenda is to actually adopt the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There is one change to the agenda. We are going to add D above, and that will be community comments prior to adopting the agenda. Usually during our business meeting, there are no community comments, but we do have a parent here this evening, so we want to make sure that we, you know, respect her time and her ability to speak to the board. So, A, B, C, excuse me, E, I'm sorry, E, I'm sorry. E will be community comments, F will be adopted agenda. Sorry about that.
Okay, I need a motion to adopt the agenda with the changes.
I motion to adopt the agenda with changes.
I'll second.
Mrs. Adams has been moved to second. Would you call the row, please?
Yes, Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes. And next is community comments.
Come up to the podium and Mrs. Adams is going to read the parameters.
While you're on your way, just a reminder for community comments, we ask that you address the board as a whole through the president and not board members individually. Limit your remarks to three minutes. No extensions will be granted. When your time is up, you are to stop speaking. It is important to address any matter involving pending disputes, grievances under a labor agreement, disciplinary action involving an employee or a student in ongoing labor negotiations. The purpose of community comments portion of the meeting is for members of the public to express viewpoints and public concerns.
Hello, board. My name is Asha Shanklin. I'm a parent of Trotwood ELC at Madison Park Elementary. So, my concerns today or my grievances more so were pretty much with, more so with Madison Park, honestly. There's been a pretty prevalent lack of communication of the chain in regard to some, well, in general, but in regard to some matters. Even as far as like for upcoming field trip, I inquired about field trips, Spirit Week with my daughter's teacher and a couple other things just over the year thus far, and didn't get any kind of reply back or response at all. It went as far as having to reach out to the principal. And that communication just didn't feel very professional, completely up the chain. Also, just the organization of the school or organization across schools, I would say. In the matter of the field trips specifically, what I inquired about was chaperoning, which I've done since my daughter was in kindergarten at the ELC, which has never thus far been a problem. I've always just paid associated fees and gotten there on my own transportation, which is completely fine. What was more so concerning to me this time was when I asked about it, it was told to me that to keep down confusion, they wouldn't be accepting chaperones, which I didn't necessarily feel was a clear answer. And I didn't understand what the confusion was, and in light of like other events happening in the school district recently, I felt like there could have been a more clear communication there so that at least I understand what's going on. Obviously, some decisions are made with rationality, but I felt like it could be more clearly communicated what was going on there. Even in regard to asking the teacher about little things such as Spirit Week, it was told to me to, I don't know, call the front office. So, there wasn't any ownership taken there, which kind of stood out to me because, you know, we're just all working adults and that doesn't always fly at work, you know what I mean? So, that was, that was more so my concerns there. With my son, he's at the ELC right now. There was a situation where he had an incident in August, late August, where he got hurt on the playground, and there wasn't much communication given there either, or a lot of clarification on what happened or any kind of thorough looking into it even. So, that was concerning for me. So, pretty much just communication across the schools has been a concern for me. So, that's pretty much it.
Thank you for that information. I will, I will follow up with the principal at Madison Park and someone will be back in touch shortly. And, yes, I'm familiar with that answer. All right.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Subject A, approval of life touch, first place spirit where in American income life commission checks for Westbrook Village Elementary.
Yes.
B is student activity purpose statement and budget. MH functional class TMHS for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Approval to accept donation to TMEA to Madison Park Elementary. And I need a motion for action on the consent agenda. Are there any questions? I need a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Adams has been moved to second. Will you call the row, please?
Yes, Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Next on our agenda is the treasures report.
So, I have tonight on the agenda, the approval of the financial forecast. You heard a presentation about this last week. I did send an update to the board yesterday. We, I worked with our consultant at K-12 Consulting. We made just a few tweaks to that. It certainly didn't change the overall outcome of the forecast, so I did attach that in the executive tab, and I also provided a paper copy to you. So, I am asking for your approval of the financial forecast this evening.
As Mrs. Adams has stated, she has already presented the forecast. Are there any questions? So, I need a motion to approve the financial forecast.
I motion to approve the financial forecast.
I'll second.
This has been moved to second. Mrs. Adams, will you call the row?
Yes, Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
The other thing on, under the treasures report tonight is just for your information, the approval of the September 4th, 2025 work session meeting minutes and the September 18th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. So, those are in your folder for review, and we can approve those at the next meeting. And that's all I have for tonight.
Next is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. I only have one item this evening, and it is the personnel agenda. And I do want to apologize to the board for not sending it last week. I, I was omitted off of an email. There, we have some folks out in, in the HR department. So, it, it's really nobody's fault but mine. I should have made sure that, that I had, that I had the personnel agenda. But I did send it to you earlier today, and there are really no, I would say, I don't want to say the word alarming, but really nothing outside of what, what we have procedurally throughout the year. Resignations, additional supplementals, math teacher, and the additional, excuse me, additional supplemental appointments. So, I, I am asking for action on this this evening. But do understand that I did not get it to you prior, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read some of it too, did not get it prior to, to get it to you guys prior to last week. Get it to you last week, I'm sorry, not prior to last week.
I need a motion to approve the personnel agenda.
I'll motion. I'll second.
It's been moved to second to approve the personnel agenda. Mrs. Adams, would you call the row?
Yes, Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes for personnel agenda. Item number five is discussion items and updates.
Okay, I have several items that I was asked to provide information to today, this evening. If you grab your, your folder that I provided. Item A is the agricultural partnership with Central State University. Mrs. Cherry asked me to provide some information on the ag partnership. And what I could find, if you look in your folder under item A, was the initial article or an initial article with regards to the partnership with Central State, the city, and including the school district. And this is from 2018. Upon my research, I've, I've had some conversation with, with folks from the city. And Central State left the, the center back here, the Trotwood Center back here, they, I think they left in two, twenty-one. So, we really have not had any dialogue in regards to this partnership. There has been a lot of turnover, and I think the lady that you see on the picture, I think she was two presidents ago, maybe, maybe two presidents ago. So, the, the development of that program and, and the communication and the conversation that was taking place with the city and ourselves over the last several, several years kind of disseminated a little bit. But what I will say is that we have just started some conversation with Central State again on a couple of different things, and I'll, I'll follow up on one here shortly. And we can do, and we will do our due diligence to see what happened to this, to this program and what happened to the partnership. I, I know from just thinking about, thinking about it retrospectively, nothing really formulated. I know they had the space over there. I know they started doing some things, and then COVID hit, and it just kind of, kind of withered away. But as far as the partnership that was supposed to be established between ourselves, the city, and Central State through this program, nothing is current. I've also had a conversation with, with Mr. Nadeer, who is pretty prominent in the Central State Alumni Association. And he's going to make some outreaches, outreach to see, you know, what, you know, what happened. But as of right now, that program in the essence of, I think what, what we were trying to find out, Miss Cherry, does not exist.
Okay.
Right? Yes, sir?
I do, I'm waiting to contact the doctor.
Doctor? Okay, so we, we are on it. We're trying to find out, you know, basically what the, you know, what the, the content of that was. You know, between us here, most of us weren't in these roles, so we really don't know what, you know, what that consisted of. But Mr. Nadeer is going to, he's going to reach out and, and I'll bring an update back to the board. Right? All right, the next item is item B, which is an update on CCP. And let me get my computer back up, I'm sorry. So, in your folder, you have a email from Mrs. Hague and the other counselors at the high school with regards to where we are currently with our CCP enrollment. There are currently forty-seven students participating in CCP courses. There are two meetings scheduled on October thirteenth and October fifteenth. The number was over fifty, but there were a few of the CCP students that went to Miami Valley CTC who we do believe are taking CCP courses at CTC as well. So, we'll, we'll get those numbers. And she also informed me that, and she put not, but it's actually offering those other courses with, with the intent to increase the enrollment as we move into the second semester. So, as a first semester, there are forty-seven kids taking CCP courses. And I think three or four of them, maybe three or four of them are on track to possibly obtain their, their associate's degree simultaneously with their, with their high school diploma. We got some kids making some strides.
Mr. Howard, I do sit on the CTC board. I will see how many Trotwood students are in the house building.
That'd be great. I appreciate it. All right. Next, I was asked to provide a update for RAM pathways. In your folder denoted C, you will see there are currently ninety-six students enrolled in RAM pathways. There are four or five additional students that are slated to move once we get the, the additional laptops. Fifteen are restorative. Those are students that are assigned for disciplinary consequences in lieu of suspension. Fourteen are multimodal. Those are some students that are in both, they're, they're, they're on virtual, and they're also coming into, into the, into the building. And we're going to start bringing those kids into the building probably next week, and they'll be doing a couple hours here. Those are some of the kids that were, that were not as engaged as we needed them to. So, in, in response to that, we are obligating them to come into the building and spend some time with Mr. Stone and our, and our other staff member there. What's the staff member's name? She's so new, we, we, yeah. Yeah, we'll, 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 we'll figure that out and let you know. And then there are thirty-five accelerated students that, those are the students that have shown the ability to manage themselves online without much oversight. So, they are doing the program and moving through the program on their own, and they are not going to be required to come in. And that's where you get the acronym RAM, restorative, accelerated, and multimodal.
And multi?
Multimodal.
Okay.
Is that the previous RAM nation?
Yes, yes, we changed it to RAM pathway. So, we have those three different pathways for kids. Kids that are having some, some trouble during the day-to-day, kids that may want the virtual experience but have not shown the ability to manage it on their own. And then thirty-five students, accelerated students, that are doing, doing what they need to do with regards to the virtual experience.
I was just going to ask, when you said that the students will be coming in with Mr. Stone, what does that look like?
So, logistically, we are going to run a bus route to pick up students in shifts. And we're looking at, at about two to two and a half hours per shift, so fifteen to twenty kids. We got a space in the back that we're utilizing. Carrington?
I'm not going to say anything.
We got a space in the back. We, we've got it set up as a classroom. And we are hopefully going to get that started next week, hopefully. Because we got to get the bus, we got to get the bus situation and the pickups worked out. But they'll come in two hours, we'll take those kids home, bring another group in, pick them up, take those kids home, and then our bus drivers will get back on their, on their fleet run at the end of the day. And then all of those kids will have the opportunity to work themselves out of, of coming in through that, through that blended learning, you know, model if they, if they show improve what they, what the expectation is. But you got a group that's doing what they're supposed to be doing online, and you got a group that's, you know, and then, of course, you have another group that is, you know, that we're using, utilizing the space for in lieu of suspension or expulsion. Right? Mrs. Simmons, did you have a question? I'm sorry.
I'll ask later.
Okay. All right, the next item is we're going to start, we're going to change the, we'll, we'll change the heading to Miss Cherry's list.
I'm going to do two.
No, no, you, you do as many as you need. The next item is D. It is the mental health caseload. So, what, what I was, what I would ask the board is to give me another couple of weeks as we're still finalizing those caseloads, and I'll work with Mr. Nadeer to just settle on where we are. We're still doing a lot of transition, the new contract, changing, changing providers. So, once we get all of that information, I will provide the board an update on those, those caseloads if that, if that's okay. Which is? The, the contract for the mental health services. Okay, that, that's the premier contract, which is now, what, what they changed their name to? Right, Samaritan Behavior, and they've, they've changed their name or they're billing through something else. So, we, we approved that one early in the summer, but it may have a different name now, so we just need to make sure we, we pull that. But remember, all of these, the majority of this is paid through Medicaid billing and the wellness dollars from the state. So, the majority of these students, most of them, that money does not hit the general fund. All right, so we'll get those contracts and update, update you guys. But I know we have a, a caseload, but when I looked at that request, I wanted to make sure we had all of that, all of that current and up-to-date information prior to bring it to you guys. All right? All right. And E, the last item is labeled, will be labeled E, and it is a follow-up from the Dream Big Tours. It was the presentation that I believe Mr. White brought to, brought to the board. He was, he had some dialogue with Ms. Howard over at the high school, and he provided a, 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 just a workup of what, what those tours would look like. And if you, you see, this initial one would be along the northeast, 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 excuse me, northeast pathway with Howard, Morgan State, Coppin State, Bowie State, American University, and then some additional, additional sites. But you see what that price is per student. Seven ninety-five, which is a little steep, but
I fitted a patrons list. I fitted a patrons list.
So, we would have to have some discussion about
It has to be between forty-five to forty-nine students for that price.
Right, for that price. So, the lower it goes, the higher, the higher the cost.
Right. The prices are bad, I mean.
Yeah. And, and I, I think we are I, I think we are not saying that it's, it's not anything that we, we can't, we can't put out there and get out, get out to the kids. We're just, we just have to gauge what, you know, what that interest is and how many kids we can get, you know? And then there was a, there was a southeast trip as well that he quoted at seven ninety-nine with attendance to Alabama A&amp;M, Clark Atlanta, Morehouse, Spelman, Tuskegee, Montgomery. Alabama State is, is not on there, but Alabama State, and that was seven ninety-nine. And then they provided a, just kind of a sample itinerary for what, you know, what that would look like. And we used to do something like this, very similar, very similar to this when we took the eighth graders to Washington DC. And we are, we're, we're working on trying to get that back as well, you know, because that was a, that was a standing trip that we had for kids. And we found over the last couple of years, we just couldn't get the, we couldn't get the interest because of the cost. So, again, we'll, we'll get it together, we'll, we'll advertise it and put it out there, and we'll, we'll see what, you know, what, what the interest is. Now, what we do have to understand is that there is a date that, a cutoff date that we have to have this so they can reserve all this, so they can get the tours booked, get the hotel rooms booked, et cetera. So, I will put this back in the hands of, of Ms. Howard over at the high school, and we'll see if, we'll see if we can get some interest.
So, are the students and parents present to this information or?
Nobody, no, I wanted to bring it to you guys first.
Okay.
Because what, what will happen is he will, he, as in Mr. White, will, will likely come in and do a presentation to a group of parents and give them the information, put it all together, give them a brochure that outlines all of the tour sites, the itinerary, so on and so forth. And then give them the opportunity to, to select whether or not they're interested in it.
If my memory serves me correctly, he said this was just for the Trotwood students, right? Because it wasn't open up for
What, what he said, what he did with this was for our kids.
Okay.
But I, I don't know, I mean
The tour might be fair.
Yeah, 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 this, this markup was for, for our kids, working directly with Mr. Smith and Ms. Howard over in, in the athletic department. All right? So, we'll follow up on that, and I'll keep you guys informed. And that is, that's all I have. No, it wasn't bad at all.
Next on our agenda is the treasurer comments.
All right, I just wanted to share, I, over the last couple of days, have received some information from OASBO, my own professional organization, as a report from Governor DeWine and his tax group. And so, there are some, it's, it's a pretty lengthy report, but I plan to kind of summarize it in an email to you and send it to you just so we can keep up with possible, possible tax changes and things that have already had some action taken. So, I'll be sending that to you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is back to Ms. Howard's, treasurer comments.
Okay, I do have a few comments. The, the first item, and I'll make, I will make reference to your folder again. The first item I have is the, the information with regards to the celebration of life of the, the staff member, the band staff member that passed away. I wanted to make sure the board had that information. The service is scheduled on, on the seventh with visitation starting at nine. The board will have flowers, we are sending an arrangement on behalf of the board, excuse me, to the funeral. And the band will also be playing. The band will also be playing with regards to her service. So I wanted to make sure you guys had that in hand. I will probably stop by for the visitation and just, you know, give my condolences to the family. And then we will have, you know, we'll have a lot of representation there with regards to the band, they will be playing. We'll take them, we're going to get them right after, right after our buses, get off the fleet run, we'll take the band over. And it'll be a field trip, so the kids will, they will not be counted, there will no attendance in fraction counted against them. We'll get them, they'll go over there, they'll play, they'll come back, and we'll go from there. If they want to come back, I'm sure it's gonna be an emotional morning for those kids, but I just want to make sure you guys had that information. Okay, next, I have a packet of a couple of different things. The first item is a congratulations award, I guess that's what we say, I can say, from the McDonald's Corporation, the Trotwood Madison, Trotwood Madison High School has been selected as one of the high school sports programs to receive funds from the 2025 McDonald's High School Sports Digital Fundraiser. Local McDonald's restaurants will be raising money for local high school sports programs. Restaurants will be donating ten percent of all digital sales made in the McDonald's app on Thursday, October twenty-third, to your school's athletic department. So with all that being said, the McDonald's, of course, is gonna be the McDonald's on sale. And all of the digital purchases through the app, we will receive, our athletic department will receive ten percent of those purchases. So this will be blasted out via our social media platforms and our parent, and our communication platforms, Parent Square. And we will make sure everybody is aware that, you know, even if you don't like McDonald's, go get some fries or something to help support our, help support our program. It's a fundraising opportunity and we're doing everything we can. We're trying to find all different types of things we can find to help offset some of the cost of our general fund. Okay, any questions on that one? All right, the next one is, if you just turn the page, is the opening, the grand opening of Westrofo. This is the new business that is right off of Wolf Creek. You got, I can't remember the name of the one business, the one news facility. Beyonce, right, and then right behind it with the green and gold is Westrofo. They have invited all of you guys to the grand opening. I have already RSVP'd for you, but if you cannot make it, it's okay. And I've informed them that, they just needed a number, just a number. So I've informed them that, you know, there are some of our board members that will not be able to attend, but I'm gonna RSVP for everyone. I know Ms. Murdock has already confirmed that she will be there representing the board, I don't know if Ms. Adams will too. I will be out of town, so the two ladies will be there representing the administration. And if any of you guys are interested in coming, just, you've already been RSVP'd, they're gonna have, it's a whole day ceremony. And I told them that most of us would not be able to make the whole day because they have, they have like some odors in the morning at nine, I messed that word up. And then they have lunch, and then they're also gonna have a dinner at the steam plant. And if you're interested in, and the dinner is later in the day, but if you're interested in going to that, just let me know. But I have already RSVP'd, I can let them know if you're interested in going to the dinner, I just need to give them a call back. Oh, it's the fish fry essential, and nothing, and I learned that last year. Nothing can stop that train from flowing. So I will make sure that they know that... Okay, in the morning, so it starts at nine thirty. It starts at nine thirty, registration is at nine thirty. And if you plan on attending, you'll go to the, you'll go to the tent and give them your name, they should have some badges for you. And then there may be a little part of the program that you may need to say something, if you're there. Or somebody.
I'll be there.
Yeah, somebody, whoever, if Ms. Cherry's not there, somebody just say something on behalf of the school board. All right, so the program for the actual grand open ribbon cutting ceremony and all that, the lady told me today, it's probably about an hour and a half at the longest, at the longest, but you can leave anytime. But they're making a whole day out of this. All right, on to the next one. The next item is the Goodwill Drive to Victory, the tenth, excuse me, October tenth, excuse me, the tenth of, no, October is the tenth month. October sixth through the ninth, let me get that right, it's been a long day, and it's hot outside. My allergies are acting up, the weather has got me all over the place. So the sixth through the ninth, from eleven to seven PM, we will have a goodwill truck on campus. We have shared all of this information with the community, we shared it with the city of Trotwood, we're gonna blast it on social media several times. All of the donations, of course, will go to Goodwill, but based upon the amount of donations we get, the Trotwood Madison High School band will get a, will get some financial benefit from this. So it is a fundraiser in the sense that the community participates and the band will receive, will receive some, you know, small financial donation to their, you know, to their organization.
Going out the clauses and...
Yeah, with that being said, there's gonna be a huge truck up there, if you got anything you want to get rid of. This would be a great, this would be a great opportunity to do that. Eleven to seven, and they'll have somebody manning it the entire time, okay? All right, the next one, the Unity Parade is this Saturday. That is with the anti-bullying parade, anti-bullying program. The detour program is actually, the name is from ten to two. It will be at the middle school, there will be vendors, there will be food, there'll be a lot of things going on. And I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that. We have the Dunbar game that same afternoon, so I will stop in for a little bit and spend some time talking to some folks. And then I'll head downtown to the Dunbar game, and there's a volleyball game going on. They're close to each other, so I'm gonna do my best to try to make both of those. But I wanted to make sure you guys had that information. Yes, Saturday. All right, and last but not least, this is the flyer for the Motown Review that the band and the choir are preparing for November thirteenth, starts at six o'clock. It will be in the high school auditorium. If you had a chance to visit and attend the event they had last year, it was pretty cool. And they are excited about this program, and I wanted to make sure I shared that with everyone on the board today. And that is all I have. Oh, I did wanna make sure I shared with everybody the posters that we had made with regards to the strategic plan. You will, if you happen to visit some of the buildings within the next couple of weeks, you're gonna see those posted in the building as well. They're smaller for the buildings, that's the only big one we have. We're excited about pushing that forward. I will share with the board within the next week or so, I'm gonna finalize a date with the city of Trotwood. And myself and the administrative team are gonna go over and meet with the, well, not meet, but present in front of the city council, and I'll let you guys know that date to talk about our performance, to talk about where we are, to talk about our strategic plan, and some of the things that we have on deck with regards to our mission and our vision. We are excited about that, those posters were, they weren't that expensive. We got a really good deal on them. We messed them up the first time, so they even discounted them even more, they forgot a whole section. So the guy came over and he said, well, what we can do is, and he was trying to figure it out, he's like, you know what, we're just gonna do it, we're gonna retrain them. So we have those and we'll get those out in the buildings here in a little bit. And I do got one more thing, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, we received a wellness grant through the EPC. And Ms. Adams, please correct me, those monies are received based upon the...
Part of that is we apply for it, and we'll apply for it again this year.
Okay, okay, so with that money, it had to be spent on wellness things. So one of the things that we did, and Ms. Ross, who's not here, we purchased through the grant, completely grant-funded money, no general fund money, we purchased some exercise equipment for anybody in the district that is interested in using the exercise equipment. And we got a little exercise room that we set up right here to the right, before you leave today, you can stick your head in there and take a look at it. It's all pretty nice stuff, but I wanted to make sure everybody knows it's grant money.
She was clear about that in her email.
So we want to make sure you get a chance to take a look at it. We're working through the logistics of how we can get folks in and out of this building, because this building is a little different than the school buildings because school buildings for the most part have folks there till ten o'clock, this building doesn't. So we're working on those logistics, but we're excited about that facility, and, you know, it's small, but it's got some good stuff in there. And we're hoping that that will continue to help us bring our premium down. If folks are in better health, in better condition, then the less we pay out for... For healthcare insurance and more money we can save. So now, that is it. Thank you.
Well, good information, Mr. Howard. Item number eight, rest. Part of our agenda with board comments, we're starting with Mrs. Carrington.
First, I would like to say to my parent that came out tonight, I thank you for coming out. This is the way that you address your issues and concerns, this is one of the avenues. So I do, I appreciate you coming out, the board heard your concerns, so did superintendent, and I'm sure he will give you some feedback expeditiously. So I thank you for coming out. I thank all the staff for coming out, I thank you for the job that you do. I think educators do not get enough credit for what they do. And I know over the past week, the media has tried to make us look bad in Trotwood, but out of the dust the phoenix will rise, and we are rising to the top. And there's nothing they can do about that. And it's under the leadership of Mr. Howard, Jill, Mr. Nadir, and Mrs. Murdock. I thank you for all of the work you do. I want to send my condolences out to the Blue family and the passing of Natia, the Trotwood Madison family and her Central State family. A bright light has dimmed and she will truly be missed. And I'd just like to thank all the ladies here that I work with and along with Mr. Lumpkin, who is absent. For the hard work that you do and we don't get credit for, or that you don't get credit for, I think you all rock, and you need to know that every day.
Nice.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Mrs. Carrington.
Compliment accepted. Mrs. Kilgore?
It's time to follow up. But I concur, thank you all for coming out. And again, I'd like to send my heartfelt condolences to the Blue and Skrogan's family and the Trotwood band and the flag, flagging the dancers. I was a band mom, so I know how that goes, everyone is really tight-knit. So my deepest sympathy for them on such a tragic and sudden loss. And I believe that stoplight, they made a turn signal for that stoplight, because my children go that way every day. So it's good that, I guess, the city puts some, you know, more things in place for people that are, you know, in that area driving. That's all I have, thank you.
Vice President, Mrs. Simmons?
Again, I would like to send my condolences to the Blue and Skrogan's family, to her Central State family, to definitely the band family. I understand and I witnessed how close that group of students and staff are. So sending prayers for them, and I have been since the incident. Asking the community to please bring your items, clean out those attics in your closets, and bring them next week from the sixth through the ninth. We know you have stuff, I live in Trotwood, I see your garages, bring that stuff so that we can earn money and earn some cash. On Saturday, just a reminder, come out and support Erica Gist, she puts a lot of work into the anti-bullying effort this Saturday here at the school. So come out and support that. Again, thank all of our staff for always doing such a good job. The CCP and ninety, well, how many students did we have in that, forty-seven students? And the Rams Pathways, ninety-six students enrolled. We are doing exactly what we're supposed to be doing, so keep rising Rams. We have one channel here in our community that continues, wants to shine a negative light on us, however, we continue to shine. So let's not worry about what that negativity, our numbers and our staff and what our students are doing and the grants that we're getting, speak louder. So keep doing the great work.
That's it. Well, I concur with the board, my board members in reference to the tragic loss to the Blue family. It's, like I said, a tragic loss and so unfortunate. Continued prayers for the family and for our students too, because I know that they are grieving. So, like I said, continued prayers. We have a lot going on in Trotwood, a lot of positive things that's going on in Trotwood. And I will also concur with what Mr. Simmons said about the news media. We're gonna continue to do what we do, and that is make academic progress. That's what we've been doing and that's what we're gonna continue to focus on. We all matter, we all matter. I want to just say, I know it's, I believe it's the principals' month, National Principals' Month, you know. Now, every month is something, you know, National Daughter's Day, Sunday, everything. So I want to just, you know, say hats off to our principals and all of our students and staff, everyone, because, like I said, everyone matters. Once again, it's a lot going on, but the board tries to jump in and at least show our face and, you know, some of the things. We can't do it all because we do have jobs at the time of the events that are going on. So I just wanted to, if, board members, if you can, go and represent, that would be awesome. And I just wanted to say to the parents and the students, please take advantage of every opportunity that we have, all the resources and everything that we have. Take advantage of them because once, we don't want to lose it, let me say that, we don't want to lose that. So take advantage of everything that we possibly can. And with that being said, I don't have anything else yet to say.
Just one more thing, let's give a shout out and some, if you see a custodian in the building, say some kind words to them because today is National Custodians' Day, so let's thank them. Because all of our buildings, I don't care which one you go into, I am never unpleased, they're always clean and a great representation. So let's show them some love and appreciation.
Yes, like I said, it's always some sort of day, isn't it?
Tell me when it's National Pizza Day.
National Pizza Day? That's all I have. And with that being said, it is now, we will now move into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, the motion or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual per BOE policy zero-one-six-six N R C one-two-one-point-two-two, G one, action may be taken.
Do you need to motion?
I'm sorry, I need a motion, I'm so sorry, I'm before myself, I need a motion. Mrs. Adams, it's been moved in second. Would you call a roll, please?
Yes, Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes, we will enter into executive session at six nineteen.
Y'all see how fast I'm moving, Aaron, I hear him.
A lot. A lot. This, this week and next week, it's a lot, a lot. I'm gonna try to go to the parade, go to the games.
Yeah.
Try to, yeah, show my face and, well...
So, Mr. Howard? How is he, how is he looking at this supplemental? Does that not put a dent into our...
It does, it does, but, you know, those are the, you know, those are those auxiliary program, auxiliary programs that we have. I mean, our largest supplemental is that B M T. But, you know, but, you know, that was something that was negotiated several contracts ago. And anytime you try to touch that, you're good, man, thank you, appreciate it. Um, Officer Centers? Okay, thanks for coming. Yeah, there you go, all right? We try to make it easy.
Welcome and thank you.
Yeah, all right, thanks, appreciate it. Just sit there, yep. He'll, he'll have a presentation every now and then, you know? Okay. Thank you. But, you know, that was negotiated a couple of contracts ago, and getting it out is like impossible. So, what we're gonna do, what we already done is we've limited the number.
That I was gonna say.
So, so when you see, like, split stipends, because we went from, like, two years ago, I think they, they were able to get, like, eight people. We've cut it down to, like, four. So, they, so what they've been doing is they've been splitting the stipends, which is okay. You know, if you need more people, split the stipend, but you only, this is what you got. So, now we know exactly how much we're spending. Yeah, but, but like, the coaches and all that stuff, that, that stuff is...
Just for interest, I see Mr. Howard, Mr. Howard, and Mr. Howard, and it's a total of, that's twelve, I don't know.
Well, there's, there's a couple like that, I mean, it used to be Bruno all the time, she used to have all the stipends, but she doesn't have them all anymore. But some, you know, I'm trying to think who, who has more than one. It's not as many as it used to be. But you may have a couple of coaches that do a couple, like, coach in the fall, and then coach in the spring.